I hereby call the June 17, 2019 Alexander County Board of Commissioners meeting in session. At this time, we will stand for our invocation by Commissioner Larry Yoder, followed by our pledge allegiance from Commissioner Brian Mayberry.
Let us pray. Our kind and most gracious heavenly Father, we appreciate the opportunity that you've given us to meet here tonight. Lord, we would ask that you would be with those folks that were lost their lives this weekend. Be with them, be with their families. Be with our law enforcement and our emergency personnel who responded. Help each and every one of them to come to peace. Help the families and guide and direct them as they go forth in the next several days, in the next six months to a year. Lord, we would ask that you be with our military personnel, both at home and abroad. Be with our state, our local, and our federal government to help those folks that are in leadership to understand the things that they can do and the things they can't, and the wisdom to know the difference. Lord, we appreciate you looking after us, for blessing us, and we ask all these things in thy name. Amen.
Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. It is my privilege to now introduce to you Annabeth Harris, our own local 4-H person and District 4-H president, and she will attend part of the county commissioners' annual meeting in Greensboro in August. A 4-Her from each county is invited to participate in the youth summit portion of the event, and she will be our representative, and we would like to have her step forward to the podium, and she'd like to share a few words with us.
Hi, my name is Annabeth Harris. I'm going to share my 4-H story with everybody. So, I'm a 12-year 4-Her from Alexander County, and I'm currently serving as the 2018-2019 South Central District President, which has 21 counties in it currently, but I think we're fixing to drop down to 19. I am also one of the two North Carolina 4-H State Secretary/Treasurer candidates for the 2019-2020 term. I'll be running in June, well, late July, I'm sorry, this year at North Carolina 4-H Congress. I go to Alexander Central High School, and I'm ranked 43rd in my class, and hold a 3.0 GPA, and I'm currently going to be a senior this year. I'm also very involved in our high school FFA chapter as well. I started my 4-H journey being involved in many different livestock shows. My first was a rabbit show, which led to goats, and then to a spring dairy heifer. I raised my heifer Dorothy, which came from Chapman Dairy in Alexander County, and I had worked out a contract with Bill to return her after the show-in season. I also won a lot of medals with her, which was really cool. After my show-in days ended, I started getting more involved into clubs that Alexander County had to offer at the time. I got really involved into Livestock Club, which I held multiple officer positions. I was one of the first members to attend the Sugar and Spice 4-H Club and held every officer position within the specific club, but due to the fact that it lost its charter, the club had to end. I attended the Busy Bees Needle and Thread Club as well, and held every officer position that the club offered as well. I also attended the Shocker's Electric Club for a short time. After the Busy Bees Needle and Thread Club and Sugar and Spice Club lost their charter due to the lack of membership and to the lack of community service projects sometimes, I became more focused on the citizenship and leadership areas of 4-H. I've served as a junior leader this year for six years. I've also held every officer position of the Alexander County 4-H County Council, where I have served two consecutive years as president. Currently, I serve as the Secretary/Treasurer. In March of 2018, I ran for the position of the South Central District President and was elected. During my term, I have attended two state council planning conferences. The North Carolina 4-H Evergreen Event, where district officers were invited to man the tables during the recognition dinner, which is a really cool experience because we got to see all the old 4-H members that had ever been in North Carolina 4-H and got to really honor some of the ones who had passed, and families who had really made a big impact in our county as well as our state. I plan the North Carolina 2019 Citizenship Focus Conference that was held last week in Raleigh. We got to visit our local legislators, and I had a personal meeting with Andy Wells. I did not get to meet with Mr. Elmore. He was not available at that time. On the planning team, we got to actually plan different workshops, and that was really cool. We had a team of 10 students and members, and it was a really neat experience, and I hope that I can be the senior planning team member next year. I also attended and presented the awards at District Activity Day on Friday. This is one of the mandatory events that district officers must attend, and we also got to hand out the different awards, as well as another commissioner from Lincoln County got to help me with that as well. Like I said, I will run for the North Carolina State 4-H Secretary/Treasurer in late July. I've always dreamed of being a state officer. I think it'd be really cool to wear the green jacket, so that's the going thing when you become a state officer. Some last comments, 4-H is an amazing organization that's really changed my life as a whole. 12 years in 4-H is a total experience that most kids don't get to offer, and if I could say one thing to the elementary school students that are in our schools is you need to get involved. Alexander County 4-H has a lot to offer to many young children, young and old. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks. Well, Ms. Annabeth, you may be the most decorated 4-H person I've ever met in my life. So, congratulations. That's quite a list of involvement that you have there, and we're excited that you're representing us, and we would like to talk to you about, you know, possibly some, a little bit of sponsorship of some kind for your trip, but that's amazing. We're glad to see people like you doing wonderful things and having an impact on the community and learning so many lost arts skills that a lot of people don't have. So, be proud, because you're doing some amazing things. Thank you very much.
Well, Annabeth, I'd like to say that you'll enjoy the conference there in Greensboro, and also the breakfast that they will have, where you'll be able to meet more representatives from the local governments, because each county is represented there. And I know that I'm going, I don't know how many of the rest of them are going, but I will be there for the breakfast, and look forward to seeing you there, your representation of Alexander County, and best of luck on winning that office position there in Greensboro. Good luck.
Thank you. At this time, we'll entertain any commissioner reports that we may have.
Mr. Chairman, just like to say, I attended a couple grand openings just in the last couple weeks, and I think we've got a lot of things going on in the county that's good. Nickel Pickles, the bakery across from the high school, if you hadn't been there to get something sweet, I'd advise you to go by. And also the Bethlehem Direct Care. Mr. and Ms. Harris, Dr. Harris, you know, they opened their office up, I think about three weeks ago. Had the grand opening last week, several people attended, and, you know, there's a lot of things happening, so I told them, you know, we needed more health care within the county, and that's a good thing to have. So, just those couple things going on, which is great for a county.
It's my understanding, too, if you go in the Nickel Pickle, you better get there early, because it's selling out. So, that's a good thing.
That's a good problem to have, too. Yes, sir.
Any others? At this time, I would like to, it's not necessarily a report, but it is a thank you to all of our emergency services and law enforcement people that have been actively involved in our disaster situation, as well as the tragic fire and the loss of lives and the things that they have to respond to and see, then walk away from those scenes and then just leave them there. They're with them. So, certainly our thoughts are with you, our prayers are with you, and we appreciate the extension of compassion and courtesy and diligence that each of you have done in some really, really, really tough situations over the course of the last two weeks. Greatly appreciate you. We've had a chance to observe the agenda. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the agenda.
May I approve?
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion concerning the agenda? All in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion passes unanimously. Now, we'll recognize John Pilkington for public hearing on rezoning case 19-4, Jason Apsher.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good evening to the boards. Tonight, you have a public hearing for rezoning request 19-4 that was submitted by Jason Apsher. It's for property located on Highway 16 South. To give you some idea, it was property that was owned by the Jehovah's Witness. It's cleared off, and it's right beside the convenience site for the county in that area across from property owned by Mark Davis, I believe, as well. And I think you guys, I know the projectors have, but you guys have the maps in front of you as well. Mr. Apsher is requesting to rezone this property from RA-20 Residential Agricultural to Highway Commercial. The property consists of approximately 3.08 acres. Properties surrounding that to the north are zoned, where the land uses are residential and commercial; to the south are residential and commercial; to the east are residential and to the west are residential and commercial. All the surrounding zoning districts to the north, southeast, and west are all zoned highway commercial. The Planning and Zoning Commission met on June 6 and was unanimous in their recommendation of approval of this rezoning request. Mr. Apsher intends to use the property right now as a drop lot for wrecked vehicles. He operates a wrecker service in Wilkes County and often comes to Alexander County to pick up vehicles as well, and he needed an area to store those because of the surrounding property is all zoned commercial, and then this property's actually, if you've been by it and noticed it, it's cut out within the three acres, so it's surrounded on three sides by a vegetative buffer. And then, fronting the road, Mr. Apsher plans to fence it in for security purposes and then put a screen, the opaque screen, on the fence so that there wouldn't be any visibility from the road. With that being said, the Planning Commission was unanimous in their recommendation based on the fact that it's consistent with the future land use map in the 2008 Comprehensive Plan. It's also consistent, the rezoning is consistent with the goals and policies that were adopted in the plan, and that it would not negatively impact the surrounding with regards to commercial development.
Thank you, sir. At this time, we'll go ahead and entertain a motion to open the public hearing, and then you can continue at that point.
Stayed moved.
Second.
All in favor? All right, we are now in a public hearing, so please continue, Mr. Pilkington.
Okay, thank you again. So, that was the Planning Commission's recommendation. Staff's recommendation was also along those lines, and so if you have any questions, I'll be happy to try to answer them. I don't know if Mr. Apsher is here. Yes, he is, right there. So, if you have any questions of him, certainly feel free to ask.
Well, all the proper notifications have gone out, and IDs have been made in the paper, and residents have been notified, so is there anyone that would like to comment during this time of public comment for this case? Mr. Apsher, do you like to say anything, or? All right. Mr. Pilkington, you have any further information?
Nothing further, unless you have any questions of me.
John, so this fencing that we will have there, it will definitely cover up any stored cars, wrecked or damaged cars, and we won't have any concern with all of it being visible from the road. My only concern, and I understand the fencing, but I just want to make sure that we do have the proper procedures in effect to make sure that you don't see the vehicles from the road.
Well, I'll never say that nothing is 100% not, but yes, it should handle the majority of seeing anything from the road.
Yeah, I mean, if it didn't, I mean, you could put some cypress or something up.
Right, and everything surrounding it is zoned commercial as well, so there's not technically a required buffer, but it basically has that natural buffer.
On the side.
On the side, yeah, and on the sides.
All right.
Any other comments?
Can I add to that?
Yes, sir. Just come on up, if you would, Mr. Apsher.
Yeah, just to add to that, for the most part, it's temporary storage. If, you know, for instance, we tow in a vehicle for Highway Patrol or local police, and it ends up abandoned, we do have a process we have to go through, through the state. It takes about 30 days to allow us to get rid of it, but no, we're not, it's by no means to be a junkyard. Our place in Wilkesboro is right on, or North Wilkesboro, is right on the five-lane 18 North. You know, we keep it clean-looking, looking decent. We, you know, try to pride ourselves in a presentable property, so we by no means want a eyesore for the community, want to be an asset to the community and provide a service we need.
And I understand that, and I mean, I know who you are and everything, and so I just want to make sure the public understood that it's not going to be that way.
Yeah, and that's what I want to communicate. I mean, I want to be a good partner for the community, and I don't want an eyesore, any issues with anybody. You know, we'll keep it clean and covered, whatever we need to do.
Very good. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments? I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Stayed moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Motion passes unanimously, and we'll now entertain a motion to approve rezoning case 19-4, Jason Apsher.
Mr. Chairman, I'm moved that we approved the rezoning request. It is consistent with the future land use map in the 2008 Comprehensive Plan, is also consistent with the goals and policies adopted in the plan, and the request will not negatively impact the surrounding with regards to commercial development.
Second, the motion.
Any discussion? Entertain a vote. All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion passes unanimously to approve. We'll now recognize Mr. Doug Fox, Alexander County Tax Assessor, who would like to share with us about settlement of parcels split by Alexander County and Iredale County, and Mr. Guy Curley will be with him.
Mr. Chairman, Board of Commissioners, I'm not Doug Fox. He's the big guy behind me. He's a little bashful. You should have in your packet a very short synopsis of what we're here to just basically inform you of, what process has been going on between Alexander County, Iredale County on our eastern county border now for quite a few years. Doug's a person who's been dealing hands-on with Iredale County in this process, and we thought it'd be a good idea for you to be aware of what's going on, how the process has unfolded, why it's unfolding, and all that, so I'll let Doug explain that to you.
Thank you. Just to give you a brief history, we've dealt since the late 1990s, I think it was around 1992, it was adopted to establish the county line. There was some surveying done, and since that point, we've been splitting parcels on the county line on a case-by-case basis, so when a deed is recorded that changes ownership, we would split that parcel on the county line. We didn't really want to do all of the county line at one time, just because it affects a lot of things. So, with that being said, we've done that for years. Excuse me, Iredale is pushing to complete this project, and the general statute says you're not supposed to tax anything outside your jurisdiction, and so we got a county line established, and what they're saying is we're taxing things across that county line. So, they're going to split the remaining parcels and telling us, or asking us to do the same on our side. We've, over the years, it's about a wash, really, from what we give and take. We're down to around 60 parcels that will be split, six of which have homes on them. The other parcels are all just vacant land. So, we have done all the preliminary work, and we've got it all ready to go. We just want to make you guys aware that basically are, the way we understand it, they're going to tax them on their side, so if we tax them, it'll be double taxation, so we really don't have a lot of say-so in the matter, but...
So, Doug, let me get an understanding. So, you've got 100 acres of property.
Right.
And 75 acres is in Alexander County, then we tax the whole 100 acres. Is that correct?
No, that's the way we've done it in the past.
That's why, that's what I'm saying, that's the way it's been done in the past.
Right.
So, now...
Either it'd be 75 and 25.
Okay, now, we're going to use the actual survey line, and...
Right.
Any property that's in Iredale County that would be the reverse of that, we would...
Exactly.
Everybody's going to split it. Well, I'm surprised it hasn't been done that way before, but...
And that's the only county line we have surveyed. We've got, of course, the Catawba County lines of water, so that's pretty easy. We don't know where the Wilson-Cowell County line is located exactly, so that project can't take place on those sides at this point, so... But it is, we're splitting parcels. We're not requiring them to do any legal activity on either side, so if their deed's only recorded in Alexander, they don't have to record in Iredale now, but if they have a transaction, they would need to record in both.
So, on that same 100-acre parcel that Ryan used as an example, if 75 acres is here and 25 is there, but the home, the dwelling, is on the 25, then they tax the 25 in the home value, and we tax the land value? Is that how that would work?
That's correct. That's correct.
Wow.
And we've been, like I said, we've been doing this for a period, a long period of time. In 2015, Iredale released every house they had to us because they had an audit on their board of elections, so they decided at that point they were going to take care of all the addresses and put them on our side that they had. So, again, it's been going on for some time. We've never had any resistance that I'm aware of when it comes to this.
So, in saying that, I know that's the issue here now, you said the Caldwell and the Wilkes lines are not as defined. We just say that that property's here and that property's there? Is that how that works?
They cross over. We've never had any issues, and we wouldn't initiate this. Iredale's been the push behind all this. We get along with all the counties around us, but Iredale has pushed to cut that along that line. The same time they surveyed our county line, they did their complete boundary, and they've done, they're still working with Wilkes, I believe, but all the other sides, they've completed.
So, Wilkes and Caldwell, they're pretty much on the same page as we are right now, and there's no issues with any properties that cross the lines?
No, and you can read...
The problem with splitting the parcel with Wilkes and Caldwell is we don't know exactly where to split them, because the line's not perfectly defined.
Right.
In 1992, Alexander County entered in with a group of all the other surrounding counties of Iredale, and it was a resolution adopted that we would jointly survey Iredale County line. So, if we know by survey and by recorded plat exactly where it is, that's just not the case with Caldwell and Wilkes. As far as you split a parcel when you don't know where it should be split.
It's like right and left-hand side of the road, pretty much, isn't it?
And the law hasn't changed on that taxing in your jurisdiction. You can read into that all kinds of ways, you know? If you're not double taxing it, we're calling out our jurisdiction, it's not a, that's the way we've always looked at it, but that's not the way they're looking at it now, because they know where it's at.
And that would be a difficult survey to do.
I don't know that they did it on the ground. They did it just by GPS, I believe. I think, I was reading the plat a little bit, so...
Well, there's some areas down there from my days in transportation that, you know, you're in a house, and you turn in, and you're in Alexander, and you go on the other side of the house, and you're in Iredale.
You got to get in Iredale to get to some of the stuff in Alexander, if you're out that way. We just want to make you aware in case. We will notify everyone. Iredale will notify them. This won't be effective until 2020, so it doesn't affect this year's taxes or whatever.
So, then we need to approve doing this.
I don't think, this is more just a notification that, so you guys were aware what was going on.
Thank you very much. Any further questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, fellas.
Come back anytime.
Thanks, guys.
All right. Come back anytime. Yeah. Bye. Thank you.
We'll now hear from Russell Green, Emergency Services Director, sharing with us storm damage and the update from the storm.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Mr. French, as always, it's kind of bittersweet to stand here. I get to stand here and brag on some great volunteers and great county staff, but unfortunately, I get to report that we've had significant damage in a good portion of our county. As y'all know, on Friday the 7th through Sunday the 9th, we had some unprecedented rains in Alexander County. We were out with DOT on Saturday night late, closed a number of roads, had a number of trees down. DOT staff was out till well after midnight on Saturday night. Our emergency service folks, who always do a great job for us, they were out, some of them manned their stations all night, answered calls for downed trees, closed roads, did an excellent job. On Sunday morning, we received calls for two gentlemen in the water in an area that's typically a stream that's only 40 feet wide. It was about 200 yards wide at this point, Sunday morning. Rescue squad, Bethlehem Fire Department, Wittenburg Fire Department, and we wound up calling a swiftwater team out of Caldwell County to assist. It took a little over two hours to get both of those gentlemen out of the water, but they were safe. About the time they got all their equipment loaded back up, we got a call for a van who had driven in the water on Rink Dam Road, where the water was about three and a half feet deep running across Rink Dam. That lady was rescued as well. The third incident, excuse me, a young lady, or lady on River Shoals Ridge, when Duke Power started releasing that much water, it came up around her house, and she had to have help getting out of her residence. And in following that, within a matter of probably 30 minutes, in the northwest section, Ellendale had two gentlemen that thought they could drive through that, and I think they learned a valuable lesson. But our emergency service folks, as always, troopers out there all night, all day long on Sunday. By 6:00 a.m. on Sunday morning, we had called back in, all of the DOT staff, had a number of washed-out covers and bridges that affected state roads. Today, we still have, and I didn't confirmate it late today, we still have six or seven state roads that are closed. A number of those will remain closed for a few weeks till we get some engineering and get those things in place. So, again, our staff, on Monday, on Sunday, we actually opened our emergency operations center. Director Gillespie from EMS, County Manager French, Mark Earl spent most of the day in my office. We were basically just trying to get a handle on what was going on around the county. We did issue a statement on Sunday morning asking folks, this was a tough decision, asking folks not to go to church, but it was the right thing to do, in my opinion. We didn't need people on the roads. We'd already had people driving in the water. We had culverts washed out, you literally could not see. So, made contact with Chairman Peel. He issued a state of emergency for Alexander County Sunday morning early, and we operated under that. On Monday, staff from the Department of Public Safety started making damage assessments, and that's the folks out of inspections, and our office went out, and to date, we've recorded 80 private properties that have sustained some type damage. Most of that is driveways and culverts. We've got four commercial properties listed, two of those being our schools, had damage at Wittenburg. We had damage at Bethlehem, Carolina Gloves, a commercial property, and we have a dredging operation on Liledown, at Liledown, that also lost some equipment, so those are the four commercial ones. We continue to get calls. We had two calls this morning of folks that had damage, and it's typically a couple inches of water in the basement. My driveway's washed away, my culvert's gone, those kind of things. Our worst house was in the Bethlehem community, a gentleman who's typically 100 yards from the river, had 48 inches of water in his house. He's 20 inches above ground, and he's typically 100 yards from that river. They found his motorcycle about 200, 300 yards down the river, and that was just below where they conducted the water rescue earlier in the morning. We put the word out through our PIO, Mr. Herman, and Chad Ritchie did a great job getting the word out for us that if you had damage, you need to contact our office, and the reason, and people sometimes ask, why do you want to, why do you want to know? You're not going to do anything. Well, we want to help. We want to help any way we can. To get financial assistance, we have to qualify, and we have to meet some thresholds, either with the state or the federal government. And for individual assistance, which would be for homeowners, we have to have 25 homes that are substantially damaged with, that are uninsured or underinsured. I can tell you now, with our... I can tell you now, with our eighty on the list, we don't meet that threshold. Uh, same thing with the state, we don't meet that threshold. So our number one priority with these folks, do they have access? And to get some of them access, we actually called in the North Carolina Forest Service Bridge Crew. And with some assist, some assistance, some local merchants, these young men came in and over the course of three days, built us three foot bridges to give people access to the house. We still don't have their vehicles out, and they may not have their vehicles out for some time, but they have access to their property. Uh, in some remote locations, up along Lambert Fork was a couple of those. One of those was here off Otte Dyson, off of Church Road. And I, I gotta give credit to Cyper Lumber Company, the North Carolina Forest Service, and Energy United Electric. Energy United was able to drop us up in a place where we couldn't cut trees to build a footbridge with. They were able to drop us a couple of fire poles. And we're able to use those. So three foot bridges built, uh, the property owners will participate in the cost of that. But Cyper delivered that material at about half cost, half price, which was great. And this community always comes together well for those kind of things. We still have that group of people out there that have washed out culverts and bridges, and I'll tell you, the best, the best news I've had since this started, was late this afternoon, I had a contact from the Samaritan's Purse. That gentleman will be here in the morning. I've got staff in the office that's gonna take him out and show him some of these driveways because when I called them on Thursday of last week, the gentleman in, uh, in Wataga County, he said, Russell, we're working six disasters across the United States. He said, you know, we got a warehouse full of equipment, but I don't know what's left in the warehouse. He said, I've got to go lay my eyes on my warehouse to tell you if I can help you. So they're coming in the morning to assess the needs of these driveways, and these are the folks that typically don't have the means to repair them. And Samaritan's Purse hopefully is gonna be able to help those folks, okay? Uh, Baptist Men's been here and met with a couple homeowners. They were able to help one family. I had a lady call me this morning and say that she and her family have already cleaned out their basement, removed the carpet. And that's literally at this point what we can do. Now, our best hope for assistance, at this point, we're not gonna meet those thresholds. If Catawba County meets that threshold and gets a state declaration for disaster that qualifies them for small, small business administration loans, because we're contiguous, some of our citizens would be eligible for those small business administration loans. That's still to be determined, and it may be a couple more weeks before that's actually determined. Catawba County's still doing their damage assessment process as we speak. Uh, this morning, like I said, we had eighty on our list. This morning, I met with Lenny Rogers and Allison Brown from Corporate Extension, and I met with Pamela Brown from Soil and Water. They've been compiling a similar list that deals with farms and, uh, riverbanks that affect farms. And, uh, instead of me trying to remember what Pamela sent me back after our meeting, I'm gonna read it to you. What we're doing is we're trying to share information so we don't lose anybody. We don't wanna miss anybody or them fall through the gaps. But the Soil and Water Office has filled a lot of calls concerning flood impacts over the last week. Uh, Jim Probst, who is our NRCS Supervisory Soil Conservator for Alexander County, he's actually in the process of requesting an emergency watershed program funding. And that's some federal dollars from his federal partner. If the funding is received, it will be used for stream repair, debris removal, and bank restabilization on agricultural lands. The Soil and Water will be providing more information, so I can give you the heads up, gentlemen. Soil and Water's gonna be coming because some of those programs require a local match. But I can tell you, I've seen some farms, uh, I went up a driveway the other day that's three quarters of a mile long. It looks like you dropped a series of bombs off of Zeb Watch Road. That stream will be impacted for years. And the cleanup will not be easy for that stream. They had a hole in their driveway I could put my truck in. So this old fat boy had to walk in three quarters of a mile top those people. But they're, they're working to get things repaired, okay? And there's another program through the Farm Services Agency that Corporate Extension's working with. It does not require a disaster declaration. And if you remember back to the tornado, the Farm Service Administration actually applied for some funds through this program. Those funds have been awarded. Remember, the tornado was in October. Those funds have not been distributed as yet. The list is there, all that's there, but it takes a while to get that money and get the process moving. It would be in reimbursement. So there are other programs out there that, that other agencies can help with. The other thing that we've done to assist our citizens is cooperatively with Catawba County and Caldwell County, we've set up a two-on-one call system, and that's manned by United Way. If you call as a resident of Alexander County, you can register your, your information, name, contact information, location. You can tell them what your problem is. That puts that in a database, and if there's a volunteer organization out there that can do what you need and they pick that up, then they'll contact you with their assistance. I can tell you, my only reservation about that is, when you call an agency, one of our citizens calls an agency, they anticipate they're gonna get help. And I, and if you'll see our press release, it said this is no guarantee of assistance. And I wanted to stress that part because I don't want somebody to call and they say, oh, they're gonna be here next week. Well, if they don't ever call you back, nobody picked you up. It's about, they've got about a sixty to seventy percent success rate, so I, I wanna stress that to our citizens. It's a great program if it were, if, if somebody picks you up. But for, for most of our folks, a couple inches of water in the basement's not gonna require a Baptist Men's Group. Most of them, most of those volunteer agencies do not repair culverts or driveways. So I, I don't wanna give false hope, okay? But we continue to take calls at our office. If anybody's hearing this on the radio or sees this on the TV in the next couple of weeks, if you know of somebody that has damage, just ask them. Have they called us? Contact us. We keep putting the list together. I don't think we'll meet any threshold, but we don't wanna miss anything. We keep going after everything we can get. And to that end, to stress some of this damage, uh, I've got a, a series of pictures. I know the audience here can only see this little screen up here. That's an area that is off of Lambert Fork Road. That bridge was an I-beam construction that was about originally twenty to thirty feet wide. You can see there's about a sixty-foot hole there now. That's one of the places, go ahead, Chad. That's mud off of Dover Church Road that washed up on the deck of a house from the side of the mountain. Um, that's another building on that same property. It washed out, undermined the corner of it. That's the same location, still mud on the back porch. This is an area that Mark went out to one day. You can see that culvert. He actually, they had another access and he was able to get on the backside of it. This one, I'm trying to remember where these are because I can't see that corner down there.
Oh, Healing Springs.
This is all Healing Springs Road, uh, complete washout. That's great video because there's somebody working on the place, uh, and that's wonderful, and that's, I think, on Blair's Fort. That's Dover Church Road again, a washout area. Um, this is Duck Creek. That's a driveway that's washed down. The driveway washed it out. Those folks don't have the means to repair that. This is our commercial operation, the Glove Mill. Uh, they suffered some damage in their basement, lost some stock as far as shipping stock, cardboard boxes and so forth, and they're still assessing those numbers. Their issue is this. That's their packaged sewer plant on site. It's full of sand and water and mud and muck. And their motors are there and everything's full of water, so they, they still don't have an estimate on what the price to repair that is. Pretty significant damage. It doesn't look bad when you look at the picture, but it's pretty significant damage on the dollar side. That's undermined. Uh, I think that's, uh, Heritage Farms Road, I believe, and that road was closed. I, I got confirmation that road opened back up today on Heritage Farms. You remember with Mr. Ben Hines, this is, uh, being in Margie's driveway off of All Healing Springs. Uh, their culvert washed out completely. This is actually, uh, your property, Alexander County Water Line off of Aykard Ridge Road. Uh, we got Hickory out there to repair it as quick as possible, and actually, we have, instead of having a, a tied loop line now, we have two dead ends waiting on DOT to make that repair so we can put the water line back. Uh, up off of Lambert Fork, I believe, uh, another location. That's mud along, uh, Lambert Fork over on the Pauper Spring side, all the way up through. That's an example of one of the foot bridges that our Forest Service Bridge Crew, we don't have anything in labor. Uh, said we got the materials at half price, uh, and that's without the handrails because they're required to put handrails on them. Those guys did a very good job. Another washout, very bad location. That was a house. Tell me what the name of the corner is.
Collin.
Okay. Next, yeah? That's a culvert washed out. In a lot of cases where the culvert's washed out, the, the head wall may still be there. But what happened, the water was just so massive, it took the field out, took the driveway out on this side, and then constantly eroded off of the, the culvert if it's still there, so it's a matter of putting a lot of dirt back. Actually redirecting the stream back over to the culvert may be a bigger issue. That is actually off of Otte Dyson. That gentleman had that bass boat under his garage. It was in a good location before the storm. Now it's pinned up against his bridge. Uh, there's another location, that's off of Otte Dyson as well. We actually put a footbridge at this location. I don't know if we have a photo of it or not. Again, uh, that's, uh, tell me.
Lambert Fork.
It's Lambert Fork, yep. And then, uh, this was, uh,
Rink Dam.
Rink Dam Road. Uh, that washed out early Saturday night. That's another photo. And, and in places we had this side washed out, that side was good, and we had an issue with folks early on moving the DOT. They'd push the DOT barricades back and they'd start driving across that. Well, nothing's safe about that. So we had that same issue on Lyle Down Road, and one day this week, we had, uh, DOT brought in some barricades, barriers that we could fill with water, and the fire department went out and helped fill those. That's the bridge at Lambert Fork, uh, and we went just upstream where there was some concrete walls there and put that bridge in. That's a completed bridge. Is that all we got, Chad? I think that's all our photos, folks. But we wanted to give you a quick update on, uh, on what happened with the storm. We continue to take calls. We'll continue to do that. Uh, staff in our office, our emergency service folks, uh, we've had all the support in the world, like I said. Mr. Gillespie's been in the office. He's been out doing damage assessments with it. Uh, Mr. Rogers back there and some of his staff from inspections assisted with that. We've just, uh, it's been a busy nine, and so I think this is about the tenth day our, our staff and our offices work consistently with, with things going on. And we did, and I certainly appreciate those comments, Chairman Peel, concerning our emergency service folks. It was, been a long weekend. Uh, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have. I certainly, again, I appreciate the opportunity to stand here. I, I never wanna leave you without bragging on our great volunteers. They do an excellent job. We could not do it without them. They voluntarily manned their station on Saturday night. Uh, I know one gentleman, he put on a wet suit about four o'clock Sunday morning. I don't think he took it off till about eight o'clock Sunday night because he was in the water.
Don't know if it's necessarily a question, but a couple of observations. You know, we went fairly dry and then had as much as thirteen or fourteen inches of rain. Corps of Engineers got water backed up and the power and the dams and the lakes and, I mean, it happened that fast. I mean, if we had another storm, we would have, would have been wiped out. And the, you know, question that I heard a lot, which, you know, a lot of what we've seen, but, uh, another piece that was very fearful was when all that water's coming out of Oxford Dam, you know, the, how that holds up there, you know, that's, a lot of people saying, you say, well, you know, the, all the engineers say we're in good shape there, so. But that's, a lot of water runs through there.
I'm not an engineer, so I'm not gonna argue with that gentleman. Sheriff Bowman called me and he was at the bridge on Sunday morning. He said, I think we need to close it down. And I was on Barrett's Mountain looking at a mudslide to make sure we could get up Barrett's Mountain. Wasn't sure we could get up Barrett's Mountain. And I said, Sheriff, it's your call. You're down there. And he said, I'm gonna get a deputy on their side and deputy on our side. We're gonna close it. He said, water's hitting the bottom of the bridge. They called Catawba County, requested a deputy, got a phone call from a DOT engineer, said that bridge can take anything that dam can throw at it. I'm not an engineer. That's almost it about that. But it was in question early Sunday morning. They went to four gates at one point, quickly dropped back to three and a half gates. And when I say a gate, that's full twenty feet. So it's seventy, when I went down there, got back down there, we had seventy feet of water flowing through the dam. And that was right up next to the bottom of the bridge. I don't personally think it'd take much more than that. Gentlemen, again, I certainly appreciate your time, and, and again, our volunteers do an exceptional job, so thank you very much.
This time, we'll hear from County Manager Rick French, who will share with us the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty budget ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In your packets, you have two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty budget, uh, ordinance for Alexander County. It contains all funds, uh, general fund, public safety with all the fire districts, revow, solid waste, landfill, county water fund, Bethlehem water fund, Bethlehem sewer fund, all nine-one-one, everything. Our general fund is forty-one million, nine hundred eighty-three thousand, nine hundred fifty-eight dollars. Uh, as you all, uh, gentlemen, recall, we've had meetings, uh, with Finance Committee, numerous meetings, work sessions. We had a pu, our public hearing. And at this time, Mr. Chairman, this represents, uh, the consensus, uh, from those meetings and our discussions. The tax rate stays the same. Some of the, uh, tax rates with the fire departments, all the tax rates with the fire departments increased, but it's all set by savings, insurance rates, and so on, a small increase in water and sewer. But this time, we're ready to recommend that the budget ordinance for two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, uh, for Alexander County be approved. If you so see, Mr. Chairman.
You've heard the recommendation, uh, from Mr. French. I now entertain a motion to recommend the budget ordinance two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty.
Make a motion to approve two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty budget ordinance as stated.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have any discussion?
I just wanna stress, the only tax increase was definitely the fire tax. There was no increase in any county property taxes whatsoever. I wanna make sure everybody understands that. And when you're looking at fire tax, you do get a savings on your, on your, on your insurance. The ISOs, uh, all, uh, are in great shape for our fire departments. Our fire departments are manned by ninety-seven percent volunteers. They have about three or four departments that have some people that are there manned full-time. Five, there's five departments that are manned full-time. And these guys put in a lot of training that's mandated by the state. And when you're asking for people to be volunteers and state maintains all this training, it takes a lot of time from your family and everything. And by increasing this fire tax, we're able to give those volunteers the equipment and the, and the necessary tools that they need to be able to do the job that we ask them to do. And I, I just wanna make sure that, uh, folks understand that, Mr. Chairman, and, uh, I appreciate what the volunteers do. Uh, we get cheap fire service in this county, just unbelievably cheap fire service. And, uh, uh, the taxes that we pay for fire tax are minimal to the service that we get from our volunteers.
Very well stated. Yeah, and I'd like to mention, from the very beginning, when we went into the, to our budget season, we knew, we actually knew last year that, uh, you know, our, our budget was, was stretched out there pretty good. And I believe that coming in here, that, uh, departments and administration and Mr. French and, uh, certainly finance have done an outstanding job of stretching dollars and making them work and getting the most out of them. To, certainly doesn't give us everything that we want, doesn't give all departments everything that they want, but, uh, in a, with limited amounts of money, I think that people understand that, uh, tough decisions have to be made and we have to do the very best that we can, be good stewards of the money that which we're, uh, that we have before us, so I think it's, uh, Mr. French done a really good job of putting things together. I'd like to commend you and all who have helped you in that regard.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to add too, that, you know, budget's not something that we take lightly. We've met and met and remet and talked and looked and uh, just as, uh, Chairman Peel stated, you know, every department, you know, has needs. Everybody has things that they want, but, you know, we had to look to see, you know, where we can fund, where we can fund at. And there are several projects that, uh, the county, uh, we will have to be furnishing some money for some things that we have going on. It's probably eventually gonna bring some money into our county as we have development, you know, things that are going on. But it takes some time to do that, so, but, uh, you know, we, it's not something we just throw it out and say, hey, one meeting, this was it. it out and said, hey, one meeting, this was it. We met numerous times, you know, in trying to figure it out, so appreciate everyone that was involved in that process.
We have a motion and a second, and if no further discussion, certainly entertain a vote. All in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion passes unanimously. Next, Mr. French will share with us the 2020 Census Partnership Resolution.
Mr. Chairman, we are required to adopt the next, the 2020 Census Partnership Resolution, which is this agenda item, and then the next one, the creation of the 2020 Alexander County Complete Count Committee. So these are two resolutions the board needs to, to approve as part of the census process.
Any EDs?
No, unless you want to.
No, not really.
Okay, okay.
If anybody wants to hear them, I certainly will, but otherwise, no. Do you have the Census Partnership Resolution in your packet? And at this time, we'll have a motion to approve the 2020 Census Partnership Resolution.
Move to approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, or any discussion? All in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion passes unanimously, and then.
Resolution.
The next is the committee, 2020 Alexander Complete Committee, Complete Count Committee, I'm sorry, tongue tangled, entertain a motion to approve that.
Same move.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion passes unanimously. Mr. French will now share with us board appointments for Consolidated Human Services, 2020 Census Complete Count Committee, and Region E Aging Advisory Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Appointments that are recommended tonight for the Consolidated, Consolidated Human Services Advisory Committee, appoint Laura Terraban for a nurse, Philip Sprinkle pharmacist, Steve McKinnon, and Molly Lael. The 2020 Census Complete Count Committee, Chris Mead. Region E Aging Advisory Committee, Billy Walker.
You've heard the recommendations and have had time to think about this previously, so at this point, we'll entertain a motion to approve such board appointments.
Mr. Chairman, I move to appoint all those present.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion passes unanimously. Next, we have budget amendments numbers fifty-six and fifty-seven, Mr. French will share with us those.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Budget Amendment Number Fifty-Six is transfer county matching funds for the broadband ARC grant project to the Economic Development Corporation. The EDC is required to be the grant applicant and be the recipient of the ARC grant funds for the project. Budget Amendment Number Fifty-Six is to adjust the detention budget for medical invoices for April through June 2019 for an inmate being held in safekeeping, which is a central prison healthcare system, due to medical issues that exceed the county's ability, ability to accommodate. The monthly invoice is over thirty-seven thousand. In addition to abnormally high medical costs for this inmate, there are a couple of recent invoices, one over twenty-eight thousand, another over ten thousand for other inmates' medical care that need to be included in the fiscal year 2019 budget. And I'll be glad, maybe not glad, but I'll be, I'll be glad to answer any questions you have about the, the budget amendments.
Mr. Chairman, I mean, yes, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, Mr. French, on the amount of money that we're paying the state of North Carolina for holding this inmate.
Yes, sir.
And the medical cost, then, is that just the medical cost, or they charge us each day for him to be there also?
It's the medical cost.
Just medical period?
Yes, sir.
Okay, just want to make sure.
And the Department of Corrections, if we do not pay that bill.
Okay.
They'll get their money another way, from, through our sales taxes or other means.
I bet they're not going to do it for free, I understand, but.
Right, exactly.
I just want to make sure that folks understand that if you're in jail, the county's responsible for the debt.
Right, right.
We got a, we arrest sick people as well as healthy people.
Yep.
And unfortunately, it falls back on our checkbook when that happens. All right, you've heard budget ordinance amendment fifty-six and fifty-seven, we'll now entertain a motion to approve such ordinances.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the budget amendments as presented.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion passes. And now, Mr. French will share the County Manager's Report with us.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just one thing I want to mention, on June the twenty-fifth, we'll be opening water bids, that's next Tuesday. We're hoping that we're having at least three bids, we had four contractors at our pre-bid meeting, so if all goes as planned, we'll be back in July, at our July twenty-second meeting with a recommendation to move forward with the water project. We're, we're, we are anticipating the bids are going to be higher than the funds that we have, and we're looking at those, looking at our options right now, but hopefully in July, we'll have a bid to recommend to you for the water project. And that's all I have, unless someone has a question about one of our items, Mr. Chairman.
Well, every project's going to be higher now.
It is.
Because the economy's booming, and people have plenty of work, and pay premium prices for any services, that's for sure. Any questions for Mr. French? You've had an opportunity to examine the consent agenda, and at this time, we'll hear a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the consent agenda as stated.
Sure, do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion regarding the consent agenda? All in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion passes unanimously. At this time, we will enter into closed session per North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11A for five and six, economic development contractual and personnel, we will adjourn only to dismiss. Do we have a motion to go into closed session?
Same move, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your right hand, motion passes. Thank you to everyone in attendance tonight, we certainly appreciate you being here.